Good evening, Williamsburg County citizens and members of council. We're going to go ahead and open for a public hearing to hear ordinance number 202205, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a good and sufficient deed conveying the building and improvement located at 301 North Main Street, Hemingway, South Carolina, known as the lighthouse to the Williamsburg County Development Corporation in exchange for 205 Third Group Marshall Highway, King Street, formerly known as Williamsburg County Fire Department and EMS Building and Facilities. To further provide that the supervisor is authorized to sign the deed on behalf of Williamsburg County with her signature to be attested by the clerk of court. Any citizen wishing to voice their opinion about anything or about this specific ordinance that's on the table, you will have one to three minutes to do so. Please come to the podium, state your name and the district you are from. Be reminded that questions must be specific again to the ordinance on the table. A one. Going once, going twice. We are now closing the public hearing. We're going to go ahead and call the regularly scheduled council meeting to order. Our invocation will be held by Councilman Wilson.
Let us pray. Eternal Father, we want to thank you again for the opportunity to come together. We thank you, dear Lord, for allowing us to work together for the betterment of our county. Then, dear Lord, we ask you to bless this meeting, bless its participants, bless those that are looking, listening, and hearing. Then, dear Lord, we ask you again to look in that the betterment of our county is at the best interest of all of that at heart. All these blessings we ask in your name, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Wilson. We are now moving into our ordinance. This is third and final approval of ordinance number 202205, in which we just had the public hearing for. What is the pleasure of council?
Motion for approval.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Got you all have masks on. Please signify by raising your hand. Oppusers, the same. The motion is carried. I always forget that, don't I? Skip right past the minutes. We also, we're going to go back up the list and we need a motion for approval of the minutes for May 17, 2022.
Subpo. Sam.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by raising your hand. Oppusers, the same. Motion is carried. We're going to go a little bit out of order and for appearances, and we're going to allow the litter control action team, LCAT team, to do their presentation before we get into our audit, if that's okay with everyone.
Good afternoon, Madam Supervisor and members of council. I am Jeff Singleton, half of the media marketing team. And on the last scheduled council meeting, we were to, the litter action control team was to give an update of where they had been since the inception of the program. I'm going to do that portion now and bring it forward, and there was supposed to be a second portion from Chief Deputy Cumby that those numbers were being worked on, so hopefully he's here before I finish. And my trusty friend, Mrs. Frances McCleary, who is very staunch in the litter control, she asked me to do this presentation, and since she's done favors for me, I'm obliging. That being said...
She's also the LCAT Committee Chair, so she leads the LCAT Committee.
Oh, she didn't tell me that. So now I do feel out of place. The litter action, litter control action team, LCAT, began an effort to clean litter and debris from road sides, ditches, and streams in Williamsburg County on February the 8th, 2022. As of April 28, 2022, we have removed 35,940 pounds, which equals 17 tons of litter and trash from our road sides, ditches, and streams. Residents are able to call the LCAT hotline, which is 843-354-0606, and I'll repeat that number, 843-354-0606, to report problem areas and request assistance. A Facebook page titled Talking Trash has been created to help bring awareness to our citizens and residents. Illegal dumping is a very real threat to the health and safety here in our county. Wild animals scatter and consume garbage left on the road sides. Tires discarded in ditches and streams impede drainage, causing pooling of water, which allows breeding of mosquitoes, a very real threat to health. Poor drainage undermines road beds, resulting in more potholes. Tires that are burned emit toxic fumes. The LCAT team has determined that it will take a countywide community effort on an ongoing basis to make a real change in illegal dumping and littering. Your influence and leadership in your district is critical in this effort, and that line goes to various council members. We request that each of you identify one or more persons in your district to promote, lead, and organize litter cleanup and education. We also suggest that you personally visit each tire dealership in your district to secure their cooperation in proper disposal of used tires. The LCAT team is available to assist you. Respectfully permitted, submitted, I'm sorry, Frances McCleary, who is seated to my left.
Very good. Who is, I would like for council to know who is actually on the LCAT Committee portion of it.
I'm not familiar with those names, Frances, but you can do that. I know we have some of the person, some of the personnel here.
I'm on the committee. Bernie's on the committee. Zella Major's on the committee.
Oh, you got Ricky Scott. You got Lieutenant Willie Brown with the Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant Abraham McCray with the Sheriff's Office, you got Ms. Delafaye, also with Williamsburg County Government, that's also Assistant Lieutenant, also Sheriff Stephen Gardner with the Sheriff's Office.
Very good.
And you got the numbers for them.
Yeah, so I don't know what all, I'm sorry for my tardiness. So, the litter, the pounds of litter, evidently this is done on a weekly basis. So, what I have here is actually a breakdown of it, but I can tell you what it's done for the month of May, for the month of May, uh, start from May the 1st all the way to June the 4th. So it was a total of 6,760 pounds of litter that was collected from that time period that the LCAT team, along with Sheriff Officer and Environmental Services, were able to pick up, and that was in different areas on different days. We also started a enforcement report that gives us and helps us document what has been done. So, between that period of May 1st, 2022, to June 6th of 2022, there were two violations that were committed that we end up citing individuals on. There were five warnings that were given also for the improper dumping or either littering. And those areas consist of the King Street area, Greeley Vale area, Salter's area, Neesmith area, Hemingway area, Cade's area, and Andrews area. So, every, every time we go out and deal with the litter complaints or we deal with litter enforcement, an enforcement sheet is being done to keep a track of what was done, what was cited, what violation was committed to, so that'll be available for anyone that wants to know. Also, it'll cover the areas in each district of what was covered, if you have any questions on that. And we continue to try to provide this enforcement to the citizens of Williamsburg County. I know it's a hard thing to try to stay on top of. It's about like crime, it's never going to stop, it's going to be a continuing cycle, so it's going to be something that we're going to continue to do. But we just wanted to let council know, and also the citizens of Williamsburg County, that we are doing the best that we can with this, and we're going to continue to do the best that we can for this, to try to prevent people from littering Williamsburg County. We want to keep Williamsburg County clean, and that's what we intend on doing.
I want to tell y'all that tires are a real problem. People just go to the swamp and throw their tires out, and it stops the swamp up. It, you know, it's impeding the drainage. Sheriff's Department picked up 150 tires on the Gapway Road one day. It's like two and a half miles. And that's something I think we all need to work on. That's why I ask each one of y'all to talk to your tire dealers. I think somebody's getting paid to haul the tires and they just dumping them and keeping the money. Just my theory on the thing. Also, I like to bust people. When I park across the street, I notice a pretty black Mercedes out there parked, and there's a mask on the ground, right by that car. If that's your car and you dropped that mask, shame on you.
Thank you.
I'd like to also say that there is various equipments that are being purchased too to help with this enforcement. Sometime we are able to utilize it every day or every so often, but sometime we have to move it to different areas to try to help take care of matter in other areas. But just wanted the citizens and y'all to be aware that it is equipment that's out there too that we're utilizing each and every day to combat this litter control. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of council, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question before you leave. Frances, I was listening to the letter that Jeff was reading, and it stated that you and the committee would like to have each council person submit some names?
No, I want you to contact somebody in your district.
Okay.
I want you to do it.
I want us to organize it.
With your leadership.
Okay, well, let me tell you this. We, it was a, it's a, you said they have picked up some tires over a stretch of road, on the Gapway Road, but there's one bunch of tires for the last eight years. We reported it, I've reported it to the litter control officers, and it's a, it's a bunch of tires, maybe 150, 200 tires, just stacked up on the end of a field. And I know for a fact they've contacted the owners of the property that lives in Columbia, and still nothing has happened. I think he shared it off to somebody else, they contacted that person, and something, nothing still has happened. So, it probably my fault too, because I just stopped following it up. What, what cons, what are the consequences of, I know you see it's give some warnings and citations and so forth, is there anything in place any more severe that we can do once we've contacted them and tried to get them to clean it up, and it still won't clean it up?
I think with that too, with some stuff, if that's on somebody's property, I think we got to go about dealing with that a different way. I think with that is when we start dealing with that too, it becomes where we have to also get court enforcement involved with it as well. Because when it's on private property, that's their property, so court enforcement has to get involved when it comes to that, when it's on their property.
And there are some ordinances, they don't have a lot of teeth, and we only have one person in the code enforcement office, and he has a lot of things to manage, so he gets some of them done, but he's, you know, you're not looking at a great, real fast turnaround on that, because it's just under for work.
Yeah, I would think, Frances, we had a, something in place wherein if, if it's on a private property, we would go ahead and clean it up and access it to their tax statement or something along those lines. That's something we probably need to do. It's under books, we probably just need to enforce it, because it's been, it's an ISO in Greeley Vale, I don't know if, you know where it is or not, Jeff, right down past Jesse Parker's house? You go down past Jesse, don't go to your, they go on the snuggle, go to the, to your right, and where Annisil used to live?
Yeah, that's in the hall, that's in the hall.
Yeah, right there.
We are, we are familiar with it, and that's something that code enforcement has to go out and make contact with that property owner.
Well, they have, long time ago, but still nothing is happening. We just need to make sure when they contact or something happens, I don't know what, but something needs to happen.
So, the process right now, Councilman Wiz, is that unfortunately, we need to update the ordinances, because again, like she stated, they have no teeth in them. We have currently, right now, we have several homes, or several pieces of property that we can now clean up. However, creating what is called a charging document is what stopped us. The magistrate's office has asked that we revisit that and figure out how we're going to create a charging document. We pulled some ordinances from other counties and other states in order to be able to do this, but basically, in order for us to take them to court to get our money back, we have to do something or some form of a charging document. So, we are working on that now. Any other questions?
Madam Supervisor, I would like to say thank you for what you all are doing. There are several, I know in District 2, there are several groups that work to maintain their areas. Would you all be up for helping in those areas as well, or what would be the process of combining forces?
So, can the LCAT members that are the boots on the ground, please stand?
I was just getting ready to recognize them.
Our boots on the ground. There's two of them. We had four, and I think two, right now we have two. So those are the two that are, have remained intact, so let's give them...
And they were very diligently and very hard.
Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you for all you do.
And obviously, as well as our, our other agencies, our Environmental Services...
They will get together.
...Sheriff's Office, all of them have been working hard. So, let's give them all a round of applause. Any other questions? Hearing none? Thank you for joining us. I know you guys had a long day. And yes, I do have your request, whoever sent it to me. Out of the team, it was you, wasn't it? I got it. All right, so our next order of business is our presentation of the Williamsburg County Audit Report for Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2021, by Love Bailey &amp; Associates LLC.
Hey, I got this. Can you, can you hear me?
Uh huh.
Not sure if it's this one or this one. Okay, great.
That one. Yeah, that's it.
You're good.
Great, thank you. It's good to see everyone tonight. This is our first audit, so the only time I seen the council was when we first got hired to be the new CPA firm, so that was just a brief five minutes, I think. So it's nice to see all of you, and I know everyone's happy to have this first audit complete and submitted. As you know, we come in and we, we audit the records, and we issue an opinion, and of course, Liz and her staff and Robin do a great job of getting it ready to, to complete this audit. And just for your knowledge, we already have a date to come in to start interim. So we, I'm presenting now, but next month, we're coming in to start working on the 22 audits. So, so the goal will be to be presenting this to you in December this year, and having it on time submitted to the, to the state, so just want to let you know that. And so when we come in, we, we perform the audit, and then we issue an opinion on that audit. This year's opinion was an unmodified opinion. Basically, that's the opinion you want, equivalent to what people would call a clean opinion. So that's, that's a great opinion for, for the county. I think you have the financials, they're quite thick, about 110 pages. So what I'm going to do is kind of go over some of the highlights of the financials, and I know it's getting kind of late, because now we're comparing 21 to 20, and, but I just want to point out a few things. In 19, sorry, 20 was COVID and all of the challenges there, and so a lot of the changes between 20 and 21 are COVID-related, whether it be shutting down services for a part of the time in 20, or various federal dollars coming in that, that's going to adjust the numbers. So when you compare 20 and 21, 21 looks much better, significantly better than 21. Obviously, still work to do, and some of those numbers are like CARES Act or ARPA money that come in, but I'm just going to start by, as you know, you, you present, you're, you're on fund financial accounting, so you're, when you create the budget every year, it's fund financials, but when we create, which is kind of a cash basis, what you pay out, what you collect at that time is what's recorded. But when we prepare these financial statements, we also have to record a, sign up a accrual basis, balance sheet, income, income statement, which is really just capturing the capital assets of the county, the debt of the county. What I'm going to focus on is what you're used to seeing, what you budget on every year, which is your fund financials. So if you want to follow along, you can start, I'm going to look at page 17. And page 17, at the top, will say your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. And really, I'm going to focus on two things. One, you got your, your general fund, which is the first column, and then your other major and non-major funds going to your right. So if you look there at your general fund, you'll see that you had revenue of $24.9 million for fiscal year 21. That was up significantly. Fiscal year 20 was $21.2 million. So you can see that was up well over $3 million in fiscal year 20. And it was really three significant things. One, property tax collections were up $1.6 million from 20 to 21. Various reasons, COVID delayed some of the collection of delinquent taxes in 20, a new fee and lieu agreement, the changes in collecting boat taxes from three years to every year, various things like that. So that was up 1.6, and then you received 1.7 million of ARPA funds and 1.1 million of CARES Act funds. So those two things obviously significantly increased that what you see the line item third one down in our governmental revenues. So those were your three main factors that increased your revenue over 3 million to the 21 point, 24.9 million. And this, following that column, as you go down, you'll see total expenditures of 24.9. So, and out of that 24.9, I usually like to break things up and look at them a couple of ways. When you look at that 24.9, that includes roughly $600,000 of capital outlay. So if you've removed that capital outlay for fiscal year 21, then instead of having a $25,000 loss, you actually, what I would call from operations, you had about a $583,000 gain. The reason I'm pointing that out is, in fiscal year 20, you had a $1.8 million loss in the operations before any debt, debt or capital gain. So you really made a significant, now again, some of that's going to be one-time money that's flowing through, but it really, as you, when I get to the balance sheet, it really helped increase your cash reserves in fiscal year 21, at the end of fiscal year 21. So, so you had $600,000 of, of capital outlay, but overall, your operating expenditures in the general fund was up 1.2 million. That was all really, every bit of it was related to salaries. You had the ARPA funds, and a lot of that, that money went directly to pay out bonuses. So, your salaries were up 1.34 million with another $170,000 in payroll tax and benefits. So, your expenses were only up 1.2 million, 1.5 million increase in salaries and benefits, so actually, all your other operating expenditures within the general fund is down $300,000 for the, for the fiscal year. So, while you did get some ARPA money this year, all of that flowed right through into bonuses. So even though, and I know you got ARPA another year, but once that rolls off, you also won't have that related expense. So hopefully, you've gotten yourself into a better financial position than you were, you know, during, during 20. And even in 19, if you went back to 19, when I said you had $583,000 of operating income in the general fund for 21, that was $1.8 million loss in 20, it was also a $434,000 loss in 19 before COVID. So you've really made some, some good changes, and again, funding has helped there to get you to where you had an overall change in excess revenues over expenditures of negative 25 after you spent the $600,000 in capital outlay. As far as the other funds, when you look across, sorry, I've got some cheat sheets here, where I'm looking at 19, 20, and 21. The rest of the revenues there, from Royal Fire Fund all the way to the other governmental funds, that total revenue was 11.1 million, and that too was up from about 10.7 million in fiscal year 20. And by the way, I'm sorry, if you have any questions, just, just stop me, because I'll just keep, I'll just keep going. And those were two, two main things there as well. It was, it was about $250,000 of property taxes, same, same reasons as general fund, and then $350,000 of capital sales tax funds, both increase, I guess, in consumption has generated, when you come out of COVID, increase in consumption generated more sales tax, and then some forestry income as well. So when you're looking across there, so you had about five, $422,000 revenue increase across those other funds, and then when you look at, so it was up 3.9%, and then when you look at the expenses across the bottom, again, I'm looking at current to the capital outlay, I'm kind of looking in that little section right there, because I would call that your operating, your everyday expenditures before you pay any debt, before you buy any new assets. In that section, in fiscal year 20, that was, you spent 3.9 million in those expenses, and it was down to 3.4 million in fiscal year 21. So, in those other funds, you increased revenue 420,000 and you decreased expenses 487,000. So that's a, that's a good turnaround across all of those funds when you're looking at them as a, as a whole. And those expenses, some of them are grant-related. If you didn't get some of the grant funding, then you didn't have the grant expense, and also, some of it was industrial park expenditures were down in fiscal year 21 as well. Overall, in fiscal year 21, the county spent 4.1 million in capital outlay. The biggest expenditure there was 2.3 million Royal Fire EMS headquarters. You also spent 350,000 on a generator... You also spent 350,000 on a generator, about 250,000 on CAD system, and then various other smaller things. You had some airport expenditures, EMS equipment, various other equipment that you needed. So overall, the county spent 4.1 million in, in capital outlay. And then you'll see the, the debt service there. Some of that was refinancing, so some of it looks as if you paid a lot of debt, but some of it was refinanced debt. So overall, the net payments from debt coming in and debt going out, the county paid 4.2 million across all the funds in, in debt, debt payments. And just a quick reminder, you can write this down, I won't go there. But if you want to look at all the different line items of debt that the county has, it's on page 44. And those pages past that, you can go in there and you can kind of see all the different line items, different types of debt that the county has. Because you have, the general fund has some general obligation bonds that gets paid for by property taxes. And they have revenue bonds, which is paid for by charges for service. And then, then you have the business type fund, which also has debt, the water sewer. And it has revenue bonds, which are also paid for by charges for services. So when people use those services, some of those proceeds go back to, to paying for the debt. I know I kind of went through that quickly, but if you flip back forward two pages, I'm going to go over your balance sheet. I like to go over the income statement first because sometimes that explains the changes on your, on your balance sheet a little bit better. So page 15 is the, is the page I'm on. And you'll see, just like the, the revenues and expenditures, you have the various funds, starting with your general fund and then working its way to, to the right. You'll see right off the, off the top left here, under cash, general fund cash is 5.75 million. That was up significantly. Fiscal year 20, that was 1.9 million. So you can see some of the improvement that we went over with the revenues and expenditures. On the income statement side helped to generate some additional cash into the unrestricted fund there on, on the general fund. So you've got 5.7 million in the general fund unrestricted, about another million unrestricted in the other funds going across to the right. So overall, across all funds, the county's got 6.7 million in unrestricted cash. And then right underneath that number is the restricted cash of $5 million. A vast majority of the restricted cash is setting in accounts for debt purposes, to, as reserves to, to cover, to cover debt. Because in fiscal year 22, I know we're almost to the end of that one, but the, the county had about 3.7 million in debt service obligations for the general fund and about 3.8 million in debt service obligations for the business type, water sewer, those type of funds. So that cash reserve, a good portion of that is set in there and it's always being restricted to help cover any, any, any payments that were missed. The other assets there, you'll see taxes receivable, other receivables due from state and local governments. All of those are very similar, nothing unusual there. A lot of that's just timing of when things are collected. And so nothing unusual there over the prior years. Some of it's up a little bit because activity was up, but most of that's just, is just timing of when things are collected. And then you go down a little bit further to the liability section. You'll see the accounts payable there was 1.8 million. AP, AP and accrued wages are down about 750,000. That's another good sign you were, instead of accumulating a lot more unsecured debt through AP and, and wages, you were able to pay another 750,000 down. So when you're looking at your balance sheet, it looks a little healthier than it did last year because your cash is up and your, some of your liabilities are down, giving you a little bit better ratio there, assets to liabilities. And then if you go all the way to the bottom, I want to point out the general fund there. If you go to the bottom of the general fund, you'll see unassigned fund balance, it's about 4.2 million. So most of you are probably familiar with the Governmental Financial Officers Association, GFOA. They suggest at a minimum, you should have 16.7% in your unassigned fund balance. The county currently sits at 17.2%, so slightly over what the GFOA recommends. Now, Love Bailey, myself, I recommend you have 25% because I think three months is a little healthier because of the timing of property taxes. So now, with that being said, you were just over 8% last year in 20. So you went from 8% to 17%. So that, that's a good, everything from 20 to 21, it just, you know, it's going to look better. It really, I mean, 20 was COVID and, and things were shut down. And so the question is, as you're finishing up 22 and probably already got the budget ready for 23, what, what is 23 going to look like? Because 23, most likely, is going to start to get out of a lot of government funding and kind of put it back on to the, to the county and how you do and what your collections are. So, you know, you'll still get the ARPA funds in, in 22, or have gotten them in 22. But, so that'll be, I think, and it's not just Williamsburg County. It's going to be a lot of nonprofits and governmentals that will get into their fiscal year 23 and say, okay, how are we doing now that we've kind of gotten out of some of this, some of this help that we've received over, over the years? But I would say, coming out of 21 versus coming out of 20, you're in a much better financial position. And getting the audit for 22 done and, and sent off to the state in the required time will help to alleviate any cash flow issues that you may have next year as, as well. I'll, I'll finish with a couple of things. I always like to, two things. One, as you know, you got, when you get federal dollars, federal grants for different things, if you have more than $750,000, you have to have a second audit called a single audit. The county had to have the single audit. There wasn't any issues with, with the funds that we tested and that has been submitted and accepted by the Federal Clearing House. So that's taken care of. And then I always like to point out, as you know, the, the state's underfunded. We have the underfunded pension. And the county's portion of that went up from 25 million to 28 million. That's nothing that any of you as council members, supervisor can do about that. That is generated at the state level and every municipality, county that's part of that plan gets assigned their portion of that liability and yours went up. But I was going to point out, because every time, as you know, the, the last few years, the, the rates have been going up. They did freeze it one year, but it's been going up, went up two years, several years, 2% several years ago, and then it's been kind of going up 1%. And I think it went up 1% this year and maybe another 1% next year. Every time it goes up 1%, it costs the county approximately $143,000 more in new expenses that you didn't, just based on your current labor. So the 6% that's projected to increase over the six years, when you get through fiscal year 23, from fiscal year 17 to fiscal year 24, you will have been paying on average between $700,000, $800,000 more each year in pension costs than you did prior to them making that adjustment. So the reason I point that out is it's a, it's an expense that you didn't really have control of because you've been paying according to the requirements, but because it's underfunded. And I don't know what they're going to do, even with all of the increases, like I said, yours still went up 3.5 million. Even with all the increases that, that you've been paying. So I'm not sure what the future is, but that's a, that's a big hit to a lot of municipalities, governmental entities, counties, like yourself. $700,000, $800,000 and you didn't increase anyone's pay. That's just on, on current pay level. So that's about all I have. I do want to end that, I really do think the county did see some, some good financial improvements from 20 to 21. Hopefully, you saw that. I haven't looked at 22, obviously, as we finish up 21 audit. Hopefully, you will see some of that, even if cash flow was, was tight for a little bit. Hopefully, you'll see improvements in 22 and budgeted for some good numbers in 23. But we will be back down here July 25th week. We already have it scheduled. We'll bring a crew down here and start working on the, the 22 audit, much, much earlier than we did last year. Any questions? I've rambled quite a bit.
I would categorize it as a question and I guess it'd be a statement. Normally, when we get an audit back, I guess I'm just so accustomed to seeing a lot of deficiencies and recommendations. This time, I don't see that. So, so could you just give it to me in a nutshell, in a layman's term, how would you classify the results of this audit?
Well, I would say great improvement from 20 to 21. I know Liz is trying to retire, but Liz and her staff does a great job. I think having an outsourced CPA firm to look over things, we make that recommendation all the time to governmental entities. I think that's a very good control to have. So, but, so I would say your controls look really good and the finances really improved from 20 to 21. That would be kind of like the, I guess, the nutshell overall, what I, what I gather from the audit.
Any other questions?
And, and I'll be back. So if anything pops up after you look at the audit and you want to ask me, I'll be glad to come back for a meeting or when I'm down here in July. I think that the plan is to be here the week of July 25th. And then the goal, I hadn't talked to Liz on this one yet, but the goal was to come back the first two weeks of October once year ends completely closed out and try to work the, the two weeks in October as we work towards completing the 22, 22 audit.
Yes, we would like to make sure it's on time. We don't want to have to go through that again. Any questions, members of council?
I just want to say thank you to the financial staff, to the supervisor, and to all the supervisors and all the employees because I know it's been really, really challenging to have to cut back and still be able to perform at a top-notch level. So I thank you so much.
And I, I too would like to say to supervisor and her staff, and certainly to this governing body. You know, this is my sixth year being here and this is my sixth budget. I'm going to tell you right now, we have done a tremendous job from way out when I first came here. You need to be very proud of what we have done. It was a hard and tough decision, but once we put our mind to it and once we stuck to it, we did great. And I'm going to tell you right now, if we keep it up and we keep doing what we have to do, the best is yet to come.
It is a tough job because at the end of the day, you, you've still got to bring in more money than you spend. And sometimes that can be really, really tough to do.
I want to echo the sentiments of the other council members and say again to the supervisor and Ms. Liz, thank you for your hard work. Thank you to all of your staff members. It's, it's definitely not an easy thing. If you can see that this is a book. And so at some point, you know, you have to take the opportunity to just kind of digest all of it, to understand the funding and all, all of the different variants that are in it. And so thank you for all of your hard work. It's, it's never enough, but we are getting better. And, and that's the main thing that, that we have to look at is that we are getting better. So thank you for all the hard work.
Awesome, members of council. I know we made an announcement last year about the same time in stating that Ms. Liz, our chief financial officer, who has been in county for, should say 30, not 39 years, 29 years, has been with us along with, obviously, Ms. Poston. And thank goodness, she has been here to assist us throughout this process. We wouldn't be able to do half the things we do without her as well. But we have other people that are here, and I'm going to get back to Liz. So can the finance team please stand up? Bill? We had to pull people out of retirement to help us. So we pulled Mr. Bill Pop and also Brenda McDonald out of retirement to get us, to, to provide some assistance in getting this done. So kudos to the finance team and all of our support agencies that are here to help us get through this, this process. As stated earlier, you guys, she's serious this time. This is her last go around. So Ms. Liz said, I, I thank you all, but this is my last audit with y'all. So, so I'm thankful. She's going to stick around a few days a week just to make sure that we're, you know, we're, we're on schedule, everything. However, she's leaving it in the capable hands of her finance team that she's training up and getting them prepared for. We also just signed an agreement today with the recruiting company to go ahead and help us with soliciting a CPA CFO for Williamsburg County. Anybody else have anything? Let's give her a round of applause, you guys.
Yes, I just want to say one final thing. I heard Mr. Miller say he, this is his sixth year, so this is my 31st year, I believe. So I would like to say, everyone has done an admirably wonderful job in preparing this budget and getting us ready for this budget. But I, I want to say my hat really goes off to the bus driver. And I do call Dr. Cooks the bus driver because she's the one that has pulled all this together in, in, in light of this pandemic, this COVID pandemic. She has pulled all this together and done, she's done an admirable job through it all. We came out this good, all the adversities we had to go through. But we've pulled it out and look, this is one of the better audits I've seen that we've had in the last 31 years. And I, and I think we need to, to give our hand to the crew as well, but to Dr. Cooks as well.
Thank you, members of council. Any other questions or comments? Robin, I know you don't think you're going to leave us, you stuck. I can't have both of y'all go down, go out. So also, just to make a note, I want to introduce Billy's replacement, not replacement, but Billy's assistant. She is our newest attorney. Go ahead and stand up and give me your name. She's here for him.
My name is Hannah Stanley, about to be Hannah B. Cott.
So yes, she's a brand new attorney that works in Billy's office. So she's here standing in for him at this time. All right, anything else, members? All right, next order of business is the supervisor's report. Hold on, I've got a couple announcements to make. I've already spoke to you all about the agreement we signed with recruiting company. So they are working now to look for someone that's going to be suitable for interviews. There will be two sets of interviews. One of those interviews obviously will be with the, with the actual recruiter themselves to make sure that they actually meet the specifications of, that we desire for Williamsburg County. The second interview will involve members of council as well as a professional group that generally knows the language of a CPA, as well as our outgoing CFO and a member of her staff will also be on the second round of interviews. The third round and final round will be the interview with myself. So we will have an opportunity, members of council, to meet and determine, help us determine the, the way we want the county to move as a team. All right. The other big announcement, and I'm so very happy that, I know that Councilwoman Lee is very interested, is interested in this, is the Chavis One Stop Project that has been, my gosh, going on for a long time. So we just got the final word that on June 21st, we will be conducting the pre-construction meeting. And on June 28th, we will be doing the groundbreaking for the Chavis One Stop Project outdoors.
Thank you very much for that. You're right, it's been a long time coming.
I know, right?
But I believe we can see the end of the road now, so.
Yes.
We thank you very much.
Yes, and we'll be pulling together invites and getting those things out to all of those who were responsible for getting this done for us. Also, if you don't know, she's been publishing, our Director of Recreation Department has completed the project down at the Chavis One Stop gym area. It is now open for those who would like to work out. It's, it's pretty, pretty nice down there. Anytime, you know, I believe it's a swipe card process, but she will. Anytime, you know, I believe it's a swipe card process, but she will have people down there to direct our citizens that want to use the facilities down there indoors for recreation and weight training, et cetera. So it is open. Let's see. The also coming soon, we just closed out the two accounts for Circle Park that will be handling our behavioral health issues in Williamsburg County. They will have, that will be partnering with us. They will be there by tomorrow to pick up their checks. They have already conducted their interviews, hired, and they're in the process of training the new health providers that will be here on scene. Pretty much, they should be opening within sometime this, end of this month. Like I said, everything's been ordered, internet and things have been done. I believe the building is complete now, and we are ready to open. So we'll probably do a soft opening sometime this month and then do more of a a big ribbon-cutting ceremony for it. Their ideal is that they want to get in and start providing those services now as soon as possible. So again, behavioral health, Hemingway, Chavis One-Stop, it's a lot of activity going to be going on at the Chavis One-Stop location in Hemingway. So just be be on the lookout for it. Any other questions for the good of the order, members of council? None? You look like you wanted to say something, councilwoman. Okay. All right, no problem. Now we need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, Williamsburg County citizens and Williamsburg County Council.